I'd like to call the order, the Committee of the Hole meeting of Monday, July 20th, 2020. Do we have a roll call, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Carol.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Yeah.
Trustee Gafino.
Here.
Trustee Gaitley.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Martinez.
Here.
And Trustee Burman. I'm sorry, Mayor Bourbon.
Thank you.
I'm a poor substitute for Lori.
All right, I guess, audience comments? Trustee comments? Discussion, our first item is Gerald Ford incentive. Mike, Steve?
I'll take that. For those of you who probably already know that the Gerald Auto Group operates all but one of the dealerships in the North Aurora Auto Mall. They purchased the former Fox Valley Ford dealership in 2018, and it's rightfully named Gerald Ford now. They're looking to do some major renovations to facility to the tune of $1.8 million. They're looking to modernize the facility, enhance the customer service experience, and all to underlying to drive sales in the location. They are, Gerald Group is here to speak tonight, and I'll let them go through some of the specifics. But before they do, I just kind of will remind the board that a similar request was made before the Committee of the Hole on May 15, 2007, where the Gerald Group came through and actually discussed a expansion of the Hyundai facility at that time, using this incremental sales approach to help facilitate the development at that time. It was going to help facilitate the actual expansion of the auto service center and helping to drive employment in the site as well. That project did not, did not go forward, and obviously rightfully, the incentive itself did not go forward. But after that discussion, it was deemed that the board was similar, was comfortable with the, the concept of that incremental sales approach at that time. What they're looking to do now is they're requesting, as you can see on this chart here, they're requesting $900,000 over the course of a 10-year period, capturing the incremental sales generated with the enhanced facility. And then what the underlying numbers will also dictate that that would also lead to an increase of over $1 million. So, we're all here, Bill and I are here tonight, so is the Gerald Group. I'm going to turn it over to the Gerald Group to kind of go through some of the specifics, and we'll be here to answer any question that the board has. We're just looking for feedback at this time. If the board is comfortable with this and this approach, what we probably look to do would be to work with Gerald to draft a economic incentive agreement, and then bring that back at a future COW for future discussions. So right now, we just want to make sure the board is comfortable with the concept of the numbers and how we arrived at this point. There had been several meetings over the course of the last year on this project, and Steph is comfortable with moving forward, given the numbers that they're going to be discussing tonight. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Doug Gerald and John DeBorick of the Gerald Auto Group.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. I appreciate that introduction, and it's nice to meet all of you and see all of you face to face, kind of. It's Village North Aurora has been a wonderful partner for us and our family's business since we started the Nissan store there in 99, 2000. Mike and I have had, you know, have had several discussions, and he's been a supporter of our organization the whole time, and, and, and you all have been very supportive. So I just wanted, just from 30,000 feet, before we get into really opening up to any questions that you might have about the way that this spreadsheet is working and the proposal that we have in front of you today, I just want to, you know, tell you that my strategy and our philosophy has not been to, you know, put proposals like this in front of you every time we reinvest in our business. And we've made a number of reinvestments that have turned into additional sales tax for the Village and, and sales for us over the last few years. And the reason that we've got this one here in front of you is fundamentally because it can't, you know, it, it doesn't make sense for us to go forward without a partnership. Now, in 2014, or I think it was 16, actually, we relocated and reinvested in our Kia business in North Aurora, and that same year, later that same year, we reinvested and relocated our Subaru business, both of which were, you know, substantial projects that, that, that worked out hopefully for, for the Village and for, you know, and for us. We've got what we have here, and this Ford dealership was a, you know, a small size Ford dealership for a number of years, and we hope to, you know, with our acquisition in 2018 and the different peoples and processes that we plan to put in place here, we hope to grow it. But the facility itself is, is, has not had major investment since it was built in, you know, in, in 1999. So, the data that we have that supports reinvestment in this facility indicates that there are a lot of Ford buyers in the area of responsibility that Ford has given us that have taken their sales business and hence their service business to neighboring Ford stores, not in North Aurora. So, our philosophy, the reason why we feel like facility investment's appropriate at this time is to better serve the Ford customers that Ford has that are living in and around the Village of North Aurora that this particular dealership is not serving. So, there's opportunity in sales, and that's the chief driver of the sales tax growth, as you'll see. However, the service department, it should be noted, is, is far underperforming relative to our own internal benchmarks and Ford's benchmarks. And today's service customers are tomorrow's sales customers, and so we feel like a total dealership overhaul that has, has some increased capacity, albeit not much. The main, pretty much all of the money that we plan to invest in this facility will be to enhance the existing customer touchpoints in the car dealership. One of the changes that we made, and that this facility will allow us to further enhance, is that all of the Fox Valley Ford clerical staff has been relocated off of this facility onto a deformer Saturn, Bob Van Nuyten Saturn facility at 204 Hanson Boulevard, which is a non-customer facing facility that we own in the auto mall. And this facility will allow us to repurpose the old office space for expanded waiting room, expanded waiting capacity for our service customers, and we hope will drive increased loyalty and ultimately, sales tax to the Village and to us for the long term. So, all of, to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, my CFO, John DeBorick, is on the call as well, but I'm sure that Village and Michael will, will know this, all of the dealership properties that had, you know, are off their incentive programs, that, you know, at one point they're on sales tax programs like this, and, and now they're, they're hopefully fruitful sending a lot of sales tax revenue to the Village, no longer receiving, we're no longer receiving any sales tax rebates, and, and it's a, it's a start that both benefited the Village, I think, you know, and certainly, our organization is, is part of the reason for our growth here. So, I appreciate your consideration. I'm happy to kind of answer any questions that this report might create and provide any color that, that might otherwise not be, not be evident by the, the board and, and the mayor and everyone. So, thanks for your time, everyone.
I have, I do have a couple of questions for clarification.
Sure.
As I understand what the, the agreement is, is this, that we will continue to receive approximately the same level of sales tax that we have been receiving. Is that correct, under the current sales volume? Is that right?
John, yeah, well, John, I'll let you answer that. I believe that you're correct, Trustee Lowry, but go ahead, John, why don't you answer that one directly?
On, on your screen, you should be able to see the 2017, 18, 19 Village sales tax receipt. And we, just as a reminder, we purchased the dealership in September of 2018. Helped to drive a little bit of incremental sales in the fourth quarter. You can see the increase of 162,000 to 176,000. Had a very successful 2019 driving sales by about 48%. And even though those sales are subpar compared to the other dealerships in, in the auto mall and other Ford dealerships, and that's where we see the opportunity. This year, for 2020, I budgeted a slight decrease in, in total Village sales tax receipts, primarily due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And in April, oh, March and April, we saw about a 17% decrease in sales, and the Village saw about a 17% decrease in the related sales tax receipts. And I did my best, working with input from our general manager, input from Mr. Hannah, in forecasting where the year would be. So we, I am estimating a slight drop, 235,000, and then we're using a base of that 219,500. And then if you look down below in the chart, essentially, I am projecting that after construction in the first year, we're back to hitting that same $258,000 number in 2019, and ongoing substantial growth subsequent to that. And so, the Village, down below, you can see retains at year one, 225,000, and a growing amount thereafter, which is more than the Village received in sales tax receipts in 2017, 2018, but a touch less than in 2019. Once this project's completed, the incremental Village sales tax receipts will be dramatically higher, some more than $100,000 a year higher. So this is a partnership where we're asking for 85% of the incremental sales tax receipts.
In other words, excuse me, but in other words, what you mean by incremental is those taxes generated by the increase in sales in the future? Is that what you mean?
Correct. That in excess of $219,500 a year.
Right, I got that, right, right. Yeah. Thank you. I have no problem with the idea.
Mark Gaitley here. So, I, I really understand your reasoning rationale. I do believe that curb appeal does breed in customers, and I liked you expanding the showroom and creating some extra space for sales. So I, I think it's a great idea, and I think we should go ahead with it.
This is Tom Martinez. I got a question for you. If this passes through, and we're able to help you as the Village, would this agreement will roll into your customers in any way? Would, you know, would they be able to benefit off this break or agreement for themselves?
Indirect benefit would be the only benefit for the consumer. Our, our organization would use the tax rebate to justify that $1.8 million expense that we would incur upfront, and the customers would benefit through, hopefully, an experience that brings them back to our dealership, purchasing more Ford trucks and getting more oil changes.
Okay, yeah, I just, I know it's been a tough time for all those car dealers and the car industry at whole. So, I am in favor, although I'm, I'm in for Dodge. But, thank you, guys.
I have a real concern with the fact that we seem to be having a growing affinity to subsidizing businesses in our village. And I, you know, it just seems like it's becoming less and less infrequent. And, and I don't know that this is something that, you know, I mean, that's just part of doing business, is you need to change, you need to evolve, you need to meet your customers' needs. And I just don't see that why the Village needs to be subsidizing that, especially when we, you know, we've subsidized this auto mall since its inception. And it should be at the point now where it should have been at the, at the, at the growth trajectory of being able to budget for improvements. So I, I just don't know that we should keep giving handouts to businesses in the community when, I mean, there is a cost of doing business that's, that's inherent in any business.
Trustee Curtis, I completely respect and, and understand where you're coming from, and all I can say is, is that in any business, there's a point at which it doesn't make sense to reinvest and, you know, and, and I would hope that the Village would look at the, you know, the location of the auto mall and the, and the success of the auto mall. They'd look at it with pride, and they'd look at it with, you know, with, you know, recognizing that it supports, it delivers. I mean, I don't, by any stretch of the imagination, try to pretend that I'm, you know, saving lives or, you know, or a public servant in any way. We, you know, as is evidenced by our actions in the past, we do and will continue to invest in our auto mall, in our business, to drive sales for the benefit of all the stakeholders in our organization, including customers and employees. As we've demonstrated by the millions of dollars we poured into the Subaru dealership, the Kia dealership, the Hyundai dealership that drives tremendous amount of sales, this is a project that for us, we'd love to do, but if now's not the right time, then, you know, then, then, you know, then we can, you know, I mean, we, we have financial resources as well, and, and, you know, and I, and, and I'm not trying to spend the Village's money by any stretch of the imagination, or, or, you know, that's, that's the reason why we have a baseline. The baseline is larger than, you know, I believe, any tax receipt that this location has provided, you know, going back a decade. And, you know, and that's, yeah, so I, I understand, but I don't see it as a handout in any way.
No, I don't either. I think what we need to do is look at the long-term benefit that after the 10 years, as the increase in the sales continues, that the Village will then stand to make, reap a tremendous advantage in terms of monetary.
Does that mean we now need to subsidize every business in our Village?
I think it depends on the situation myself, but in this case, I think, in this case, I think we should go ahead.
It seems to me that we are having a lot of investment in a lot of businesses in our community, and I'm just not sure that that is our job as the Village, is to, to be investing so heavily in so businesses through tax incentives. We don't give our homeowners this, we don't give, you know, I mean, the taxpayers this. I just, I think we really need to take a step back, and maybe not, maybe it's not giving them everything they ask for, maybe it's taking a step back and doing a measured approach. But I, I just think, you know, this is coming to the board quite frequently now from the different businesses in our Village, and it's almost becoming a private-public partnership with, with our businesses. And I don't think that's where we want to be at the Village.
This is Trustee Carol. Trustee Curtis, I totally respect where you're coming from. When I first saw this, I headed pause and take a second look, but here, I, I think that it is certainly within our right to encourage business and encourage growth of business within North Aurora. And not only that, I, I would take it a step further, and if we are subsidizing our businesses quite a bit, there's a lot of competition for other villages that want these businesses. And Gerald has chosen to make North Aurora your home, or their home, and have continued to grow and invest in North Aurora, not only in the sales tax revenue or employment, but in their general goodwill, with every community organization in the Village has gone and received sponsorship from Gerald at some point or another. And I, I think that we do take measured approaches at these when they come up, and, but I, I do think it's within our province to encourage growth, and we pride ourselves on being a business-friendly community. And business-friendly is, in one time, when businesses are struggling and the economy's not good, if we can prop them up a little bit to, to make them stronger, it ultimately benefits the taxpayers, because the more viable businesses we have in the Village, the less the property taxes will be. So, yes, we don't do it directly to residential taxpayers, but they benefit from every business that comes into the Village of North Aurora.
I do agree with Trustee Carol. I kind of see things the same way with Trustee Carol. You know, it's like, yes, we're subsidizing some tax incentive, but at the end of the day, at the long run, it's, it's helping our homeowners to perhaps retain those taxes at, at the point that they are.
Trustee Gafino here. So, I look at it as, it is a partnership, you know, and I hear it time and time again how our taxes are going up, and people want more services, you know, and, and the one thing that can keep them taxes down is sales tax, you know? We hear it all over and over again. So, to me, I look at each, each of these requests as a standalone request, and, you know, look at their value, and, and to me, it's like I said, an investment, and, you know, they've been good, good neighbors. Gosh, the auto mall's been just excellent, our community, as well as Woodman's. Woodman's is another one that we invested in, and this pays dividends alone, a place for residents to buy groceries, but, you know, by, who loves buying a car locally? I bought cars over there for the last 20 years. How nice it is that one in town, and the money goes back into our, our funds to help our community. So, I don't consider it a handout, I consider it like sort of partnership, and, and maybe not every business that comes would be a good fit for us to do that, but I think we look at them individually, and, and kind of like Sid and Mark Carroll said, I mean, they're a good neighbor, you know, they're great in the community. I just think, you know, I don't have any problem with it. I think the numbers fare well, we're going to get ours, and then they get theirs, and anything above that threshold, you know, they get it back, and definitely that Ford definitely needs an uplift, and, yeah, I'm, I'm for it and happy there in town.
Yeah, one last thought I'd like to share. If you just look at it in a simple kind of way, we cannot do this, and our taxes would stay the same. We could do this, and then have the potential for the taxes to go up, even under the deal, as you look at the bottom line according to that, across that list of prices you have there. So, I, I think we should go ahead for it, and I do agree with Trustee Gafino that we're already in a partnership with business, and we want to produce and encourage businesses to come to North Aurora. But that said, I also agree with Trustee Curtis, and we don't want to do this for every single business and every single time, and I share her concerns with an seemingly increasing number of times special requests like this have been made to the board. So, but in this case, I'm completely convinced it would be nothing but a win-win for both Gerald Ford and, and the Village.
Well, you know, we need to look at a little history. Obviously, when we first went into the auto mall, that was a risk, huge risk. And yes, we were deep into it as a partner. It certainly has been worthwhile for us over the years, though. I don't think any of us can say that it was a bad decision, it was a great decision, and we reaped very good sales tax from it. Not only that, but we, we've developed some good partnerships with the dealers that have been there, and proud of having them in our community, and also being able to say that, you know, we have this great auto mall in North Aurora, and come and buy a car, but there's other things in North Aurora, they might stop and have dinner and everything else, so it's that same old story. I think we're very judicious in the way that we select the businesses that we support and become partners with. I think in this case, we're talking about 50% of, of what they plan on extending on the development.
Right.
I guess, you know, I don't mind the 900,000. You know, you could question the rapidity of paying it back, but my feelings are that that 900,000 is going to be paid back before 10 years, and therefore, you know, we're going to reap more as earlier than what we, than what we anticipate. So that's my feeling, and I think it's been a great partnership. Gerald's done an outstanding job in the community, not just in North Aurora, but Tana and Aurora, and I think we're proud to have them in our community. And I know every time we knock on their door, they, they open their pockets for us. So, I think it's a, it's an opportunity for us to, to partnership, and not opportunity for us to show that we do want to grow, and we do want to certainly keep those businesses that we have already and see them expand. So, I hope that we, I hope we can work with this in the future.
What, what happens if the sales tax falls below the 219,5?
We get, we get whatever there is.
Yeah, so the way it's structured now is that 219,5 is that baseline, and they would take 85% of that. If it goes below that baseline, we would just receive our regular sales tax. So, basically, their, their reimbursement is predicated upon their performance and their ability to increase their sales volume.
It's above that 200, yeah.
Thank you. Well, I certainly don't want to see more vacancies in that location, and I am in favor of partnering with them. Bill, how do you, how do you think the, the numbers are going to impact our capital fund, our road funds? Do you think this is going to be a significant, have a significant impact on our budgeting?
No, because I think we've taken the base concept of retaining 100% of what we've been getting and reasonably anticipating, and so you're really just getting a small portion of the future sales tax dollars that are going to be generated as a result of the improvements. So if anything, there's going to be a, if it goes according to, to plan in some form, shape, there'll be probably incrementally better sales tax numbers for the general fund, and then once it's paid off, you'll have a, as with other sales tax agreements, you'll have a larger amount at the end of it. So, this is kind of a model that's been talked back and forth a little bit for a few years, and I think, you know, it, it kind of fits, it fits our needs, and I think it fits Gerald's needs as well, and it kind of puts the onus on them to increase the sales above that base volume, as I mentioned.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
I'll add this, team, that when, when a company comes in and does remodel work or repair work or makes improvements to their building, that does spark more development and improvements for our community. And I like the idea of, of that, because I do believe that it'll add, enhance that whole area there. So I'm really, I'd like to see us go through with this program.
I like the increasement in the number of employees also.
Yes.
That's really important to our community, so. Very good. I think our discussion's been good. I think we've, the staff has done an outstanding job of working with Gerald people and coming up with this, and I think that, I think it could have a great deal of success in the future. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you for all your input.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, thanks to the entire council, and, and no matter how this project turns out, our, our organization and extended stakeholders have just been really proud and thrilled to be a part of the North Aurora community and continue to work and sell cars and fix cars in, in our community. And it's been a wonderful partnership for us, and I just want to thank everyone on this call.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two on our discussion this evening. That'd be Mr. Coe. Mr. Bosco, are you going to take that, or?
No, I'll, I'll go ahead and take that.
All right.
Yeah, I think this, the last item for discussions tonight is to sort of pick up on the mobile food vendor provisions. The Village Board discussed this on June 15th at the Committee of the Hole meeting. Staff came prepared with an ordinance of approval at the last board meeting, and the item was actually just tabled based upon some of the discussion that came up during audience comments. And you'll see here, too, there's been a little bit of addition, not only to the mobile food vendor provisions, but also to, in addition to the special event permit information as well. The main crux of why we came forward beginning of June was just to sort of update our code. Steve alluded earlier in the discussion that trailers were not included as part of the definition, and, you know, we've been seeing an uptick in these and in the use of, not really just North Aurora, but... that, not really just North Aurora, but all over the, uh, all over the country for that matter. So what we had done was updated the definition of mobile food vendor to include trailers. Um, so the, the, the definition, which you've seen the language, um, in the packet tonight, um, is a result of discussion with the village attorney and staff, and, um, per that June 15th committee, the whole discussion, the board was comfortable with the definition adding trailer. So that really hasn't changed, other than some of the specific verbiage. We also brought forth language that discussed the prohibition of, of sales of food items on main roads. And on June 15th, the village board, um, was okay with the, you know, all the main roads that we had listed specifically, and, um, I think it was trustee Lowry that brought up, uh, Banbury Road. So, uh, Banbury Road has been added to the actual list of low, roads that the, uh, mobile food sales will be prohibited on, uh, so you'll see that in the draft language as well. And when I speak to the draft language, in the packet, you'll see some strike-throughs and underlines, basically what I had done was, it just took the original language that was, you know, originally adopted in 2016, and then just, this is where we're at with everything right now. So, um, old language meets new language in the packet as well, and also too with the, um, special event permits, because if we're going to include information in the mobile food vendor provisions, we also want to mirror that information in the special event permits. Um, the one item that was sort of the point of contention in the last discussion was the hours of serving time. Uh, as we've already discussed multiple times tonight, the limit is two hours whether you're in private property or public property. Uh, what staff proposed originally was allowing up to four hours of sale on private property, um, and actually just four hours of sale in generals for, for mobile food vendors. And that was what we had come up with between then was parsing it out between four hours for private, private property, and then two hours on public property, and that's what we still have in the language in front of us today. At that time though, the board had just voiced their concerns about, you know, multiple, multiple food trucks coming on multiple days at the same property. So what we had done was added some language that would prevent some from coming on, on private property more than once in a week. So those are some important notes to add for tonight's discussion. It's, while you have the mobile food vendor information in front of you, it's, it's actually a little easier to kind of take a look at the special event language because it, it outlines it very simply. Any, any mobile food vendor, if you're going to have more than one mobile food vendor in a day, you're required to get a special event permit. If you have one, more than one mobile food vendor at a time, meaning two on one property, you're, you're required to get a special event permit. If there is more than two hours serving time on public property, let's just say that you have a birthday party or a graduation party, um, you'd be required to get a special event permit. And also for private property, um, anything in excess of over four hours would require a special event permit. So the times would go from two hours blanketed time for any location in the village to now two hours on public property limitation, otherwise special event, or four hours on private property, otherwise special event, and then you cannot have more than one mobile food vendor at a time on a property, and, uh, you cannot have more than one in a day without getting a special event permit. Um, so that sort of summarizes everything, where we're at, just want to open up to the board for questions, comments, and just see where you're at.
You know, I, I have a question that came up in the last discussion, and that is the playing of music. Isn't that in, uh, this ordinance that they're not allowed to play music, the food truck?
Yeah, so that, that is actually not in the, that's not in the actual mobile food vendor provisions, it's actually in the special event, uh, provisions that say that, you know, Sunday through Thursday, you, if you have amplification before 10:00 AM or after 9:00 PM, special event. Uh, Friday, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, outside of those times for amplification of sound, you're required to get a special event permit.
All right, so it doesn't apply to food trucks specifically?
No, no. And it hasn't been really, there's never, there's not been a problem to that effect, but sometimes, you know, you, you kind of have to lump them all in, you might have an ice cream truck, that's a mobile food vendor, someone selling barbecue from a trailer is a mobile food vendor, um, a roach coach or a taco truck, those are all sort of lumped in one category as mobile food vendors.
Now, if I could say one thing, the reason that the private time, uh, went to four hours and public stayed at two was for the most part, any event that's on public property is going to require a special event anyways, because if they're actually using village property, they have to get a special event permit, uh, regardless. By keeping it two hours on public, you're just basically saying that no one can park on a street for more than two hours, which we thought was reasonable, but by making private four hours, you're giving options for local businesses if they want to have a food truck once in a while for, you know, a reason for their customers, or more likely is, uh, residents who actually hire food trucks or trailers for private parties at their homes. Now they can come to their house for four hours, and, and that's acceptable without having to go to the board to get approval to hire a truck to come to their house.
Well, can't we make a distinction in the code between mobile food sales and mobile food catering that would, uh, eliminate that, uh, need for, i- i- if you allowed mobile food catering at a private residence for four hours, I, I don't think anybody's got an objection to that, but if it, you're on private property for more than two hours, I think you can, i- it's selling food, I think you can make that distinction, can't you in the code?
Well, I think in that case, it'd be a matter of where they're selling. If they're on the street, it'd be two hours, if they pull in the driveway, it'd be private property at that point for four hours.
Well, here, I'm against raising it to four hours. The, the, the reason we have the special, that we drafted the special permit application back in, when we had this discussion a few years ago, was to allow for the increase, exactly what Tanner Trails did today, allow for the increase past two hours. So I don't see the need to change the code to go to four hours to allow for private property, especially given the current climate we are, where people can't even, uh, our, our current businesses, our, our existing businesses are struggling every day to get customers in the door, and here we are allowing, uh, food vendors without a permit to, to go anywhere they want in the village with few exceptions for four hours. I think that gives an unfair advantage, and, and it, uh, also, I, I don't see the need to, to change the code when we already have a provision for applying for a special use or a special permit application. So I'm not in favor of increasing to four hours on private property.
I, I, I agree with trustee Carol, I think we should, uh, separate that. I like the idea of calling catering at a house versus selling it at a church or gas station or wherever they're at, I think they're two different things. So if that's what we're looking to help or not help, uh, allow on a, a birthday party to have the taco truck come, I think we should try to separate that some kind of wordage.
Okay, so that, so I'm clear, that's actually, I'm glad for the clarification because I think that was one of the hard parts for staff was how to, um, not have residents calling with, uh, special event application permits at the last second when they have a party on a Saturday, and all of a sudden on Thursday before a board meeting, they're having a party and they need a food truck license. So if I understand right, what we would do is simply put a line in that says that private residents, parties that have private residences would be excluded from this rule.
As long as they're not selling.
Right, if they're taking money, that's different.
Selling to the general public. So they'd have to actually be hired by the private homeowner and only providing food for that specific party.
Right, catering in event.
Right.
But would they be selling the food to the, uh, private party participants?
No, no, they would be catering it.
Catering services and then, yeah, and then this, serving the food.
Correct.
Clears things up.
That's fine, that's a great idea.
Yep.
I'd like to take credit from that, for that, that, that idea came from the resident that objected last week and, and actually gave me the idea of the distinction between catering and sales.
Well, that's great, I think that, uh, that already clarifies it.
But so that I make sure that we have this right, that that would only still apply to private residences, actual residence houses, not businesses.
Right.
Okay.
What, what if you had a business that wanted to cater a private party?
And charge?
Outside.
No, he's talking about someone that just wanted to hire a food truck to cater, uh, their, uh, that's a good point. I think the distinction should be not between private property and, and commercial property, but sales and catering.
Well, if they're taking money and, right, if, if someone just paying and they're giving away the food would versus they're taking money in pretentious sale or request, that would be the difference, I would think.
But if someone's taking an admission fee? I mean, I'm telling you, this, 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 there's a multiple different rabbit holes you can go down with these sorts of things, so I just want to make sure that we kind of broach every one of them if we're going to go that direction.
Right. So I definitely like the residential side of it with the catering part. I think that's what this was driving the four hour on private property, so I think right there, that would eliminate a four hour event at the church or, you know, a private special request.
Private party by definition isn't open to the public, so that could be part of the definition.
I really do, uh, agree with the catering provision over, uh, outside sales also.
Is that how they operate, where they are hired by an individual to serve a party? Does the individual pay them a lump sum of money and then they just hand out the food to the participants, or do the participants have to pay for the food as they go? I think that's a question of confusion for me.
No, the, the participants would come up to the truck and, and make their order, like if it was a taco truck, order their lunch, and then at the end of the event, the two hours, the, the property owner would settle up and pay the, the caterer, the food truck, whatever amount incurred.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, so we're, so we are comfortable with, with, um, residential districts, and I know that was brought up by that same resident, so I just want to make sure there was an issue at the beginning about having them in residential neighborhoods, so I just want to make, get that clarified. That same person spoke, they talked about prohibiting in, um, residential neighborhoods, so I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Well, I, the, from what she said, sent to me today, she, her concern was with the sales in residential neighborhoods, she was not against, like, somebody having a food truck for a birthday party.
Okay.
And, and, and a truck would have to stick, park on their property, not on.
I think that was really just, that was the only thing, Mike and I went back and forth, um, several times on how to write the four hour provision. I think the caterer's, uh, role, that's something that we can easily work with, Kevin, if that's the only change, I mean, that, that's pretty easy to come up with language and bring it back to the board.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yes, sir. You think we got it, huh?
We're giving it another shot.
Well, I sure hope so. All right, uh, we don't have a, um, a meeting, do we? No.
No, we don't.
Entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Good night, all, great meeting.
Aye.
Aye.